Have your attention, please. Good evening, Roma ISD family and guests. We're about to start this meeting. It is now 6:00 PM, and I call the special call meeting of the Roma Independent School Board of Trustees being held this Wednesday, October the 9th, 2024, to order. Let the record show that this meeting was duly posted according to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The first agenda item is roll call. Board Vice President, Mr. James Carr Senior.
Present.
Board Secretary, Mrs. Yadira E. Barrera.
Here.
Board Member, Mrs. Mary Lou G. Cruz.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. Evie Garza Jr., absent. Board Member, Mrs. Karina Mascorro.
Here.
And Board Member, Mr. Raúl P. Moreno Jr.
You.
And myself, Board President, Mr. Ricardo A. Pérez, present. Let the record show we do have a quorum in attendance at the special call meeting. Agenda items number two and three are the invocation and pledge of allegiance. This evening, the invocation will be delivered by Roma High School Senior Belzy Garcia. Belzy plans to attend the University of Texas San Antonio to major in computer science. And this evening's pledge of allegiance will be led by Roma High School Senior Manuel Vela, who plans to attend the University of Texas Austin to major in biology. Belzy and Manuel? Would everyone please stand?
Let us bow our heads. Lord, we ask you to preside over this meeting and to bless all our endeavors. During this meeting, as issues of importance to this district are discussed and deliberated, help our leaders be guided by your spirit. May they be wise in their discernment, balanced in their judgment, fair in their decision, and visionary in their planning. Though they may at times have differing views, may they listen to one another and be guided by their common goals. May they always be mindful in their words and actions of what is best for all children in our schools. Help us to build a community united in harmony of love and service. Watch over our families at home, at work, and at school, and help us to share a loving concern for each other at all times. We ask this through Christ your Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Once again, thank you, Belzy and Manuel, for leading us in the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. We'll go to agenda item number four, public comments presenter District Superintendent Mr. Carlos S. González Jr.
Mr. Pérez, nobody signed up for public comments.
Thank you, Mr. González. And now we will go to agenda item number five, which is student staff recognition. We will start off with the character trait. And the character trait is going to be presented by Roma High School Senior Elena Peña, who plans to attend the University of Texas Austin to major in pre-med. Elena?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent González, and guests. My name is Elena Peña. I am a senior at Roma High School, and tonight I will be speaking to you about this month's character traits. Responsibility. How does responsibility play part in daily life? The choices we make are what make us responsible, whether we want to be successful, confident, or accountable. What we want for ourselves is a key factor to our future, and it takes discipline and sacrifices to take responsibility. Words and actions must align together to take that step, one step forward, to build that sense of structure and trust to shows those who can't. By taking up responsibility, you become the model, the idol, and the inspiration to those who still are figuring out how life works, and therefore producing a productive cycle. Responsibility can happen anytime and anywhere without you realizing it. I myself chose to take on obstacles and battles to get where I am today, without even knowing I was being responsible. And so can you. Thank you.
Thank you, Elena. And now I'd like to welcome our District Director of Special Education, Dr. Adrián Guerra, who will make the presentation of the District Gladiator Wall of Fame. Dr. Guerra.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Pérez, members of the board, Superintendent González, members of the audience, and especially parents and students. So this evening, I want to present a group of students who are being honored as members of the first six weeks Wall of Fame for the 2024-2025 school year. I call on Roma High School students Manuel Vela, Belzy Garcia, and Elena Peña to come up. Go ahead and stand. Manuel Vela is a senior in the top 10%. His parents are Manuel and Mahaida Vela. Manuel is currently part of the Roma High School Student Council and has been the class of 2025 Vice President for three years. He is also a member of Roma High School's math club. Manuel has been a student trainer for all sports for the last three years. Belzy Garcia is our 10th-ranking senior, and her parents are José Belén and Silvia Garcia. Belzy has been in band for the last seven years, a member of the Roma High School varsity band for the last four years, and has served as drum major for the Mighty Gladiator Marching Band for two years. She has been a TMEA music scholar for the past three years. Belzy has also had the opportunity to be part of the On Ramps Computer Science Dual Enrollment Course through UT Austin. Elena Peña is our ninth-ranking senior, and her mother is Carmen Peña. Elena has been a member of the Roma High School Varsity Cross Country Team for the last four years. She has been in conjunto for seven years and a member of the Varsity Conjunto for four years at Roma High School. Elena is also part of the first-ever Roma High School's United Way Leadership Program. Congratulations to Manuel, Belzy, and Elena from Roma High School. Next, I call on Roma Middle School students Alisa Padilla, Daniel Valenzuela Guerra, and Karina Nicole Ramos. Go ahead and come up. Alisa Padilla Inojosa is an eighth grader and daughter of Mr. Raúl Padilla and Elsa Mavira Inojosa. Alisa is an All-A honor roll student with perfect attendance. Alisa is a member of the RMS Academic UIL Team in solo acting and social studies and plans to participate in one act play as a cast member. Alisa is a proud member of the RMS Student Council and plans to join the volleyball team. Daniel Valenzuela Guerra is a seventh grader, and her parents are Mr. Guillermo Valenzuela and Mrs. Yadira Guerra. Daniel is an A honor roll and perfect attendance student that received masters in both her reading and math star exams last year. Daniel is a member of the RMS Academic UIL Team in mathematics, listening skills, dictionary skills, and ready writing. Last year, Daniel received multiple first-place trophies in listening skills. She's also part of the RMS Battle of the Books Team. Aside from academics, Daniel is a part of the RMS Orchestra, where she plays the cello. Karina Nicole Ramos is a sixth-grade student and is a daughter of Mr. Regulo and Rubisela Ramos. Karina is an A honor roll and perfect attendance student who received masters in both reading and math star exams last year. She scored 100s on all her weekly exams in math and also on the six-weeks exam. She's part of the RMS Battle of the Books Team, and she's also part of the Valley's Water Warriors. Congratulations to Alisa, Daniel, and Karina from Roma Middle School. I now call on Ramiro Barrera Middle School students Jose Adán Rosa, Dayani Inojosa, and Nicolás Barrera. Nicolás Barrera is an eighth-grade student, and his parents are Alexandria Duran and Alberto Barrera. Nicolás is an honor student at RBMS and an amazing musician. He recently competed at the Rio Grande Youth Symphony against high school and college students and earned a distinguished second playing the French horn. His future goal is to attend Texas A&amp;M University at Kingsville to obtain a degree in performing arts. Nicolás hopes to be able to join Roma ISD one day as a band instructor. He believes that Roma provides friendly teachers that make learning fun and serve their students as role models and mentors inside and outside of the classroom. Dayani Inojosa is a seventh-grade student, and her parents are Rodolfo and Lorena Inojosa. Dayani is an honor roll student and an active participant in many of Ramiro Barrera Middle School's sports teams. She's part of the Titans cheer team, Lady Titans softball, volleyball, soccer, powerlifting, and track and field teams. Her favorite subjects include math and science. Dayani aspires to become a nurse in the future. She loves taking care of babies and small children and hopes to become a pediatric nurse one day to continue giving them her care. Jose Adán Rosa is in the sixth grade, and his parents are Jose Adán and Michelle Rosa. Jose Adán is excelling this school year by earning honor roll and perfect attendance for the first six weeks. Jose Adán has a passion for reading. Last year, not only was he a top AR reader, but he was also a millionaire reader, earning him the distinction of most words read. Jose Adán has already read around 400 books and plans on joining the Ramiro Barrera Middle School Champion Battle of the Books Team this year. He's also looking forward to participating in UIL academics. He is currently a member of the Maps, Charts, and Graphs Team. Congratulations to Nicolás Dayani and Jose Adán from Ramiro Barrera Middle School. I now call on Alisa Suárez, Jaelin González, and Yaisa Zapata Morales from Rafaela T. Barrera Elementary to come up. Alisa Suárez is a third-grade student in Mrs. Erlinda Garza's class. Her parents are Liseth Vázquez and Aaron Suárez. Alisa's hobbies are reading, playing outside, and helping others. She has all As in all subject areas. Alisa always tries to better herself in everything she does in class. She participates in two UIL events, storytelling and math. Jaelin González is a fourth-grade student in Mrs. Linda Diaz's class. She is the daughter of Linel Beltrán. She has perfect attendance and As in all subject areas. This year, she is an active UIL participant in fourth-grade oral reading and fourth-grade writing. Some of her after-school hobbies are attending ballet classes and playing softball. Yaisa Zapata Morales is a fifth-grade student in Dr. Hema del Morales' class. Her parents are Carna and José Antonio Garza. She has all As in all subject areas. She is an active UIL participant in Art Smart. She has exhibited good moral and ethical character traits. Congratulations to Alisa, Jaelin, and Yaisa from Rafaela T. Barrera Elementary School. I call on Saul García, Itziani Mayli Guerra, and Easton Ding Gámez from Delia G. García Elementary to come up. Saul García Laniz is a third-grade student in Ms. Angelina Juárez's classroom. He's a proud son of Liseth and Saul García. Saul is a hard-working, A honor roll student. He participates in UIL Art Smart and is part of the Gifted and Talented Program. Saul loves to read, and his favorite book is Dog Man and Cat Kid. Saul loves to play video games and soccer after school. When he grows up, Saul wants to become a truck driver just like his dad. Itziani Mayli Guerra is a third-grade student and an active learner in Mr. Jerry González's classroom. Her parents are Yesenia Garcia and Manuel Guerra. She is an A honor roll student, has perfect attendance. Itziani is part of the Gifted and Talented Program and participates in UIL storytelling. She loves to read, and her favorite book is Fancy Nancy. Itziani loves to run and play soccer and would love to join the soccer team in middle school and high school. When she grows up, Itziani wants to become a teacher. Easton Gámez is a third-grade student in Ms. Deborah Muñoz's classroom, and his parents are Teralyn Garza and Esteban Gámez. Easton is an A honor roll student and has perfect attendance. He participates in UIL mathematics and is part of the Gifted and Talented Program. Easton loves to play basketball and would like to join the basketball team in middle school and high school. Easton's dream is to become a YouTuber when he grows up. Congratulations to Saul Itziani and Easton from Delia G. García Elementary. I call on Damian Benítez, Luis Erbe Eliserio, and Camila Edith Garza from Roel A. Encelia Arts Science Elementary.
Michael Damian Benítez is a fifth-grade student in Mrs. April Acevedo's classroom. His parents are Nancy Cantú and Manuel Benítez. Michael demonstrated an outstanding performance on the third and fourth-
Fourth-grade star tests, earning master's recognition in both reading and math. He has been an active participant in UILs since second grade and is preparing to compete in fifth-grade mathematics and number sense events this year. He also is an active member of the Accelerated Reading Program. Michael's commitment to academic excellence has earned him honor roll. His passion for learning is evident in his willingness to assist his peers in the classroom in order for his fellow Spartans to be successful. When he grows up, he aspires to be a professional football player for the Eagles in memory of his uncle. Luis Erbe Eliserio is a fifth-grade student in Mrs. Lidia Aguias' classroom. His parents are Luis Miguel Eliserio and Liseth Inojosa. Since second grade, Luis has been an enthusiastic participant in the UIL program. His journey began with a spelling UIL competition in second grade, where his impressive dedication earned him a third-place trophy. Building on his success, he joined creative writing for both third and fourth grade. Currently in fifth grade, Luis is in ready writing, showcasing his dedication to academic excellence. He is also an active participant in the Accelerated Reading Program. He has demonstrated exceptional proficiency by achieving a master's level in the fourth-grade star reading and math. Luis consistently demonstrates outstanding academic performance, earning honor roll, maintaining perfect attendance, and actively participating in class discussions and activities. His dedication to improvement is evident in his strong work ethic. In the future, Luis would like to build houses just like his dad. Camila Edith Garza is a fifth-grade student in Mrs. Elana González's classroom. Her parents are David Garza and Graciela González. She is currently enrolled in the Gifted and Talented Program, showcasing her exceptional academic abilities. Throughout her elementary school year, she has consistently achieved honor roll due to her outstanding academic performance. Additionally, she has demonstrated exceptional dedication by maintaining perfect attendance. She excelled in earning a master's level in third and fourth-grade star RLA and math. Camila is an active participant in the Accelerated Reading Program. She has been a UIL participant since second grade. Last year, she participated in spelling and oral reading. She received second in oral reading in both district events. She also earned second and fourth place in spelling. When she grows up, she would like to be a nurse to take care of people. Congratulations to Michael, Luis, and Camila from Roel A. Encelia Arts Science Elementary. I call on Camila Garza, Rodolfo Quésolís, and Miranda Barrera from Florence J. Scott Elementary. Camila Garza is a fourth-grade student and is the daughter of Amanda Rios and Reimundo Garza. Camila is caring, responsible, and helpful with her peers. She has maintained all-year honor roll and all-year perfect attendance recognition. Camila received a master's in both her reading and math star tests. She's also a member of the UIL fourth-grade oral reading and ready writing teams. She loves to read and is an accelerated reader participant. Camila relishes spending quality time with her friends and enjoys drawing and painting in her spare time. Rodolfo Quésolís is a fourth-grade student and is the son of Telma Solís and Douglas K. Rodolfo is outgoing, caring, and exemplary student. He has maintained all-year honor roll and all-year perfect attendance recognition. Rodolfo also received a master's in both his reading and math star tests. He's a member of the fourth-grade UIL Art Smart Team. Rodolfo enjoys reading chapter books and is an accelerated reader participant. During his leisure time, he appreciates watching movies with his family. Miranda Barrera is a fifth-grade student and is the daughter of Wendy Ramírez and Rubén Barrera. Miranda is a well-rounded student and is always ready for a challenge. She always strives to be her best every day and has been able to maintain honor roll and perfect attendance recognition. Miranda received masters in both her reading and math star tests. She is an accelerated reader participant and is currently a member of the fifth-grade UIL oral reading and ready writing teams. In her spare time, Miranda participates in competitive cheer with a legendary cheer elite, where she is always pushed to her highest potential. She also enjoys drawing and spending quality time with her dog, Rosie. Congratulations to Camila, Rodolfo, and Miranda from Florence J. Scott Elementary. I call on Brianna Sabrina San Miguel, Elián Yael Garza, and José Jiménez Rodríguez from Emma Vera Elementary. Brianna Sabrina San Miguel is in the fifth grade. Her parents are Gabrielle San Miguel and Maria San Miguel. Brianna is an eager member of the UIL mathematics team. She is also in the softball and soccer teams. Additionally, she has a master's-level accomplishment on her star exams. She is an active participant in the AR program. Elián Yael Garza is a fifth-grade student in Mrs. Heather G. González's class, and his parents are Eloy and Mara Garza. Elián is a top reader at Emma Vera Elementary, known for his high academic achievements and dedication to his studies. He is an A honor roll student and an active participant in Battle of the Books. Elián has achieved first place at UIL spelling competitions and has earned masters on both reading and math star tests. His compassionate nature was recognized with a special award, further highlighting his character. Outside of academics, Elián has been playing piano for four years and is a talented artist, spending much of his free time drawing. Elián enjoys spending time with his brother Eloy and sister Emma Sofia. Elián enjoys school, and his friendly, hard-working attitude makes him well-respected. José Jiménez Rodríguez is a fifth-grade student in Mr. Rodríguez's class, and his parents are Letizia Rodríguez and Jesús Jiménez. He's an A-plus honor roll student known for his high academic achievements and dedication to his studies. He has earned masters on both reading and math star tests. José has a passion for science and hopes to be a great scientist someday. Congratulations to Brianna, Elián, and José from Emma Vera Elementary. I call on Damian Alvarado, Ángel Vázquez, and Jesús B. Monjarrez from Veterans Memorial Elementary. Damian Alvarado is a fifth-grade student, and his parents are Alfredo Alvarado and Blanca Alvarado. Damian continuously achieves outstanding academic performance, making him an honor roll student and a proud member of VME's Gifted and Talented Program. Damian proudly represents VME as a member of UIL math. He scored a master's on his Math and Reading 2024 Star Test, which reflects Damian's exceptional hard work and dedication. Ángel Vázquez is a fifth-grade student, and his parents are Miguelé Vázquez and Karina M. Vázquez. With a passion for learning and dedication to excellence, Ángel constantly achieves outstanding academic performance, making him an honor roll student. Ángel demonstrates tremendous enthusiasm and skill for mathematics and science that he proudly represents VME as a member of the UIL Math and Science Team. And last but not least, Ángel scored a master's on his Math 2024 Star Test, which reflects Ángel's exceptional hard work, dedication, and aptitude for mathematics. Jesús Monjarrez is a fourth-grade student, and his parents are Jesús B. Monjarrez and Jessica Rodríguez. With a passion for learning and dedication to excellence, Jesús constantly achieves outstanding academic performance, leading him to be a member of the VME GT Program. Jesús demonstrates tremendous enthusiasm and skill for mathematics that he proudly represents VME as a member of UIL math. And last but definitely not least, Jesús achieved the perfect score on his Math 2024 Star Test, which reflects Jesús's exceptional hard work, dedication, and aptitude for mathematics. Congratulations to Damian Ángel and Jesús from Veterans Memorial Elementary.
Congratulations to all these students who have been presented this evening, and congratulations to their teachers and their proud parents. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the Wall of Fame students for the first six weeks.
Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the Wall of Fame Students for the first six weeks.
Well, first of all, to our exceptional students from all of us on the Board of Trustees, congratulations for having been selected to the 2024-2025 Wall of Fame. You are the first cohort following the first six weeks. And we will have, I guess, five more presentations throughout the year, but once again, you're being recognized with this honor for your hard work, your dedication, and your achievements, which have made a very significant impact on our school district. So ladies and gentlemen, please join me and the Board of Trustees here in giving our first Hall of Fame honorees a big round of applause. Also, congratulations to your teacher students, who have guided you down this path of learning and adventure. Make sure that you thank each of them as you see them, whenever you see them the next time, because that is something that they will truly treasure. Especially when you remember, those of you in high school, for example, if you remember an elementary teacher and you haven't seen that teacher in a long time, or even a middle school teacher, and you bump into them, or just make it a point of going to see them, and they appreciate that very much coming from... I know that this is something that we all, who have been through the profession of education, we appreciate. So don't forget to thank your teachers. They, of course, were your first guides in education, but definitely will appreciate that. And lastly, I'm going to ask that all the family members, todos los padres, familiares that are here, please stand to be recognized. Please stand. Our message to you, our message to you as the Board of Trustees and the school, the entire district, is that the success of your students, the success of your children, and the success of all our children, which are under our care here at Roma ISD, may never be achieved or may never have been achieved without the loving and nurturing and supportive home environment. So thank you, parents. Thank you, and all the extended family, brothers and sisters, tias, tíos, abuelos, everybody that has something to do with their success, students. And those of us that are here administrators, please join me in giving our parents and family members a big round of applause. We are very proud of each and every one of you, and we thank you so very much for being here with us this evening. The Board of Trustees is now going to continue with the business portion of our meeting, which is not as exciting as this part here, but you're most welcome to stay if you want to, but I have a sneaky suspicion you want to take off and start celebrating. Now, we do have your posters out in the hallway. If you have not yet taken advantage of taking a photo next to your poster, you may do so at this time. Thank you once again for being with us here this evening. And Dr. Guerra, thank you very much for that excellent presentation, sir. It was lengthy as far as reading material is concerned, but thank you so much. It was a very, very nice presentation. Okay, at this time, we will continue with the business portion of the meeting. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Six, which is Consideration: Possible Action to Approve the Memorandum of Understanding Between South Texas College and Roma Independent School District to Provide Continuing Education Certificates of Completion to Students at the Gladiator Life Center. Presenter will be our District Director of Special Education, Dr. Adrian Guerra. Dr. Guerra?
Mr. Perez, Members of the Board, Mr. Gonzalez, good evening again. In keeping with our vision of Roma ISD of being a dynamic community, committed to the achievement of student excellence, I bring to you this memorandum of understanding between South Texas College and Roma ISD. The purpose of this MOU is to provide our students at the Life Center with the ability to obtain certificates of completion in different areas, specifically in healthy cooking, fundamentals of cake decorating, and beginner photography. The memorandum was attached on Board Book. It was reviewed by legal counsel already. Those changes were reviewed by South Texas College. They agreed to everything that our legal counsel suggested. Our teachers at the Life Center, Ms. Blanca Garza and Mr. Daniel Leal, will receive the training from South Texas College. This is at no cost to the district. I think it's a very worthwhile endeavor for us to go into with South Texas College, and the recommendation is to approve the MOU. Any questions?
This is something that we've never done before. Of course, we're just starting out with the Life Center itself, so...
This would be, I'm sorry for interrupting, this would be the second year that we do this. Last year, we did not bring an MOU to the Board, but this year, the way it's written, it needs to be approved by the Board.
I see. I think this is an excellent, excellent idea.
We had approved something similar to this some months ago, no? Was it this exactly? I know not an MOU, but these programs or these certificates?
I reported on the Health Matters Program, which is through Texas A&amp;M AgriLife. That required a contract also between Texas A&amp;M University and Roma ISD. That's still being hashed out and worked on. So we have not started that. It was just a presentation on what we're hoping to do this school year as a preview. When that contract is finished, hopefully within the next month, I will present it to the Board, and we will continue pursuing that. We can do that throughout the year. It can even be done in the second semester. All it requires, just like this one, is that certain hours be completed by the students, but that will safely be done, yes. That was the Health Matters Program.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Guerra?
I'll second it.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Guerra, for your presentation. Is there any further discussion regarding this motion or this Agenda Item? If not, then there is a motion on the floor by Trustee Moreno and seconded by Trustee Barrera to approve Agenda Item Number Six as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Seven, Presentation Regarding the 2024-2025 Title V, Part B, Rural and Low-Income Schools RLIS Grant Application. And our presenter will be our District Executive Director of Business and Finance, Mr. Pedro Alanís. Mr. Alanís?
Good evening, Mr. Perez, Members of the Board, Superintendent Gonzalez. I'm going to be presented on the 2024-25 Title V, Part B, Rural and Low-Income School Grant Application. No action is needed for this item. Our entitlement amount is $213,0797. The application is due on November 15, 2024. Our federal program director is expecting to submit the application by November the 1st. Under the United States Code, every Students' Act, ESSA, entity that submits federal grant application must give opportunity for public comment on the application before it's submitted. Roma ISD hereby gives notice to the public that we intend to file the application for federal grant funds with the Texas Education Agency for the 2024-25 school year. Public comments regarding Roma ISD applications for the grants are to be submitted before the public comment end date of October 28, 2024. Any member of the committee wishing to provide a comment regarding the application is invited to submit those comments by mailing Mrs. Yadira Diaz, our federal program director. Her email is ydiaz@romaisd.com. Any questions?
Was there an increase from last year?
It's actually a little bit less.
Less?
And we use these funds in the summer.
And these funds are used in the summer, is that what you said?
Most of the funds, yes. For the summers, we pay the teacher salaries.
Okay.
It's also for supplies and materials and teacher salaries for the summer. It's a great help.
I would say so, yes, at $213,000. That's what we qualify for, in other words?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Alanís? Well, thank you, Mr. Alanís.
Thanks.
Is there a motion?
No, it's no action.
No action.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's true. This was a presentation and no action. I was already going ahead to Agenda Item Number Eight. Thank you, Mr. Alanís. Now we go over to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is Consideration: Possible Action on Approving the District Improvement Plan and Campus Improvement Plans for the 2024-2025 School Year. Again, our presenter will be Mr. Alanís. Go ahead, sir.
Yes. You have a copy of the District Improvement Plan as well as the Campus Improvement Plans. All the improvement plans include the five goals that were previously approved by the Board. The performance objectives and strategies, however, are individualized and updated annually by the respective campus and district personnel. These plans have been approved by the respective site-based decision-making committees, but these plans are a working document. We respectfully request that you consider approving the District Improvement Plan and the Campus Improvement Plans for the 2024-25 School Year.
Mr. Alanís, these plans can be found in Board Book?
Yes.
And I believe every campus posts them on their website.
Yeah, it's because there's 700 pages, so we didn't print them out.
That's correct.
You can get them on Board Book.
Yes.
And they should be online for the public.
No, that would have been a lot of paper. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Alanís, for this presentation. Here is there a motion to accept or Agenda Item Number Eight as presented?
I shall move that we approve the District Improvement Plan and the Campus Improvement Plans for the 2024-2025 School Year.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? If none, we have a motion on the floor by Trustee Cruz and seconded by Trustee Mascorro to approve Agenda Item Number Eight as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Nine, Consideration: Possible Action on the Resignations of Early Voting Deputy Clerk, Alternate Judge for Election Day at El Sauz Catholic Church, Alternate Judge for Election Day at Roma Community Center, and Alternate Judge for Election Day at La Rosita Public Library for November 5, 2024, School Board of Trustees election. The presenter will be our District Elections Administrator, Mrs. Marisa Belmonte. Mrs. Belmonte?
Good evening, Mr. Perez, Members of the Board, Mr. Gonzalez. For Agenda Item Number Nine, we have four resignations. Two of them are two people that could no longer work on that day, and then the other two are to actually reassign them somewhere else because of adding the Escobares site. So we had some people with experience, and we felt that they would be able to help us at Escobares, so it's to replace those two.
Any questions for Mrs. Belmonte? Thank you, Mrs. Belmonte, but remain close by. Is there a motion?
I shall move that we approve the resignations of early voting deputy clerk, alternate judge for Election Day at El Sauz Catholic Church, alternate judge for Election Day at Roma Community Center, and alternate judge for Election Day at La Rosita Public Library for November 5, 2024, School Board of Trustees election.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? If none, we have a motion on the floor by Trustee Cruz and seconded by Trustee Mascorro to approve Agenda Item Number Nine as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Perez, and I forgot to mention, you've got copies of those resignation letters in that orange folder there with some information on the other agenda items as well.
Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Ten, which Mrs. Belmonte will also present. Consideration: Possible Action on the Selections of Early Voting Deputy Clerk, Alternate Judge for Election Day at El Sauz Catholic Church, Alternate Judge for Election Day at Roma Community Center, Alternate Judge for Election Day at La Rosita Public Library, and Presiding Judge, Alternate Judge, and maximum number of clerks for the early voting site of Escobades Community Center for the November 5, 2024 Board of Trustees election. Mrs. Belmonte?
This agenda item, the first four, are to replace the four resignations. And then the last one, the last part there is to, for the early voting site that we added at Escobares, the judge, alternate judge, and the maximum number of clerks for that site. Those would be completely new.
Questions for Ms. Belmonte?
So for this, we need to name a new early voting deputy clerk, right?
Yes.
Okay. For item number ten. For the early voting deputy clerk, I would like to recommend Roxana Serna. For the alternate judge for Election Day at El Sauz Catholic Church, the new recommendation would be Sebastian Aguilar. The alternate judge for Election Day at Roma Community Center would be Diana Guerra. And the alternate judge for Election Day at La Rosita Public Library, the new recommendation would be Itza Inojosa. And then, since we're going to have a new early voting site at Escobares Community Center, the presiding judge recommendation would be Magdalena Gonzalez. Alternate judge, Nora Fuentes. And also, the maximum number of clerks recommended would be four.
Okay. Is there a second to this motion?
I second.
Is there any further discussion? If none, there is a motion on the floor by Trustee Cruz, seconded by Trustee Escobar, to approve the following names of Roxana Serna, Sebastian Aguilar, Diana Guerra, and Itza Inojosa, if I heard correctly.
Yes.
And then Magdalena, is it Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Nora Fuentes, plus a...
Magdalena or Marta Elena?
Magdalena.
Magdalena Gonzalez and Nora Fuentes, and a maximum of four clerks. So all those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Agenda Item Number Eleven. Ms. Belmonte will also make this presentation. Consideration Possible Action on the Selections of a Central Counting Station Manager, a Tabulation Supervisor, Presiding Judge, and Alternate Judge for the November 5th, 2024, School Board of Trustees' elections. Ms. Belmonte?
Mr. Perez, you skipped Assistant Tabulation Supervisor.
I'm sorry.
Assistant Tabulation Supervisor is another one.
As well.
There's another one?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. Assistant Tabulation Supervisor added on to that.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
This is a new system that we're implementing for Election Day. So before, when we would close the polls, the judges would close the polling sites, close the computers, print the reports, and then they would bring all the signed reports with their ballot boxes back to the main polling place, which is at the Juanita Cantu Gym, and everything would be tallied there by hand and plugged into a spreadsheet that we have ready. Now, the actual USB, which has always been in the scanners and the machines, they're going to, they're going to close the computer, the polling site, everything like before. Still print reports and everything, but then they'll bring that USB, and that USB will come and get plugged into a computer that came straight from ESNS, locked and can only be used for that. We do have a training tomorrow for whoever gets approved. They're going to come train, train those people tomorrow to use that tabulation computer. And so all the reports will be generated there and we won't have to do everything manually by hand. So the county and many other entities have been using this for years already. And we decided this year that we wanted to move into that. So we'll be doing that. So to do that, we have to have this central counting station in place with these personnel and a central counting station plan, which will be posted online as far as everything, all the procedures that will happen.
And who provides the, this, like this tabulation computer and...
We already have it. We bought it, the district bought it since last year, yes.
It is purchased?
Yes, it has been purchased.
The training?
Tomorrow.
But who provides?
Uh, ESNS, his name's Roger. He's going to be coming to train, train us tomorrow.
Okay. To train whom, Mr. Perez?
Well, whoever, well, and if you see there, because most of the staff for this, it's not like outside people, like with the judges. It's mostly the recommendation for like the manager is the election administrator, which would be myself, and then our staff to do, be the tabulation supervisor and the assistant. And then from like outside, it would just be the judge and the presiding judge, which would be there overseeing. But I did include my recommendations for this. You're welcome to recommend anybody else. But whoever you all approve, that's who will get trained to, to use it.
But there's like no poll watchers for that? There's like nobody?
They're allowed, yes. You can have, every candidate can have up to two poll watchers there. They are recommended.
So you're taking out the USB from the machine? Instead of bringing the machine, you're taking out...
No. Before, there's a, there's a scanner. It's always had the USB. So, but the USB would be, they would pull it out. All we would do with it is we would store it because we didn't have a central counting station. So the information has always been in that USB. But since we weren't using that kind of system before, we would just store it and not do anything with it. The election is built on that USB. When we submit the candidates, the date, all our polling sites, our precincts, everything, they build the election and it's, everything is in that USB. So that's how the machine knows who, what to scan from the ballots.
It's programmed?
It's programmed, yes. But when we would finish, we would just put that USB away. We wouldn't do anything with it. We would run the report and we, then we would get the information. It gives us, you know, how many votes everybody got. The judges would sign it, bring that back to us. And from that paper printed report, we would tally. We're still going to get the report printed. They're still going to sign it, they're going to bring it. But now, in addition, the USB will also come. But now we're going to plug it into the computer and it'll give the results and it'll generate all the reports, which will match to what we have on paper also. So then on the 15th, what we do is they've, they've sent us, and this they do all the time also, they sent a set of pre-coded ballots. It's a sample set. And I think most of you have probably been to some of the public tests. We'll test that. Well, now we're going to test also on the computer to make sure that they match. So we do the first test and everything gets locked in a box. And then, right before the polls closes, we have to run a second test with the same set to make sure that it still gives us the same results. And then once we are done with the results, we have to run a third test to make sure that it's still giving the same, the same results. It's just an extra digital step that we're doing where we're going to be able to generate all those reports quicker and electronically.
And this is going to be done on a daily basis?
No, it's only for Election Day. Because what we do with the scanners that are used for the two weeks, we never close the polling site. So we don't print results or generate results like after every day. Like it's, you get the votes and the only thing is that the counter is just going one, two, three. But we close the polling for that day, but we don't close the election. So we don't generate any reports. We just close them, we put them away, lock them back in the room, and then take them back out the second day, and it just continues. So no reports are run until after Election Day.
So, so that, that's what I'm saying, that USB is taken out? Election Day at 7:05 is taken out? There's no report generated?
No, they, they will, they'll generate the report like always before. They'll still generate the report, sign it and everything. They'll bring the report, the printed report to us like they did before. In addition, then we're also going to have the USB, which we had before. We just wouldn't do anything with it because we didn't have the computer for it. Now we're going to have the computer with a software so that it'll generate again the report. It'll tally everything up and we'll compare it to what we're getting and the printer wants to make sure that it matches as well.
So I have a poll watcher say in Salineño. They print out the report. Are they going to be able to see the number that's printed there?
Yes. Yes. And they can, and we can, we, if we have poll watchers, we can have up to two poll watchers that sign the, the report as well.
And then who, like, they, who brings, who brings...
The, the judge comes in the police car with, with our police officers. We have a police officer assigned at every precinct. That, they bring them to us to bring the ballot box with the reports.
So the poll watcher will be able to see the number that's there?
Yes. And then we can also have poll watchers at the central counting station as well.
Which is all they're going to be doing is just plugging in the USBs?
Yes. They'll bring, like, the, each judge from each precinct will come. They'll have their, all they bring is the ballot box with the ballots locked because when they open up the machine, it's open because that's where they're falling in. But with the poll watchers watching, the judge, the alternate judge, they close it, they seal it, and then they run, they run the report. They sign the report, the judge, the alternate judge, the poll watchers. They'll remove the seal because the USB has a seal. When we test them, we place a seal and that seal has a number and they sign it. So then, you know, they'll compare the numbers to make sure that that seal was never broken until that day. And then the poll watchers, they can watch all of that. They'll take it out and then they'll bring it to us. Everything can be watched. And we recommend, you know, it's so much better when we've got, you know, that there's people there.
And I'm just asking, what's the need to do it this way? Because if you print a sheet at the end of the day, I'm just saying, at the end of the day, the day from each seven sites, and they've got a total, it's just to not add them? To not add seven papers?
I, it's just the recommendation from the state to move into an electronic, you know, and we don't have, by doing that, we don't really have to do the printed side. But this is the first time we're doing that, so we're going to do both. We'd rather just, you know, have both because we've never used that before. So I'd rather print the reports, do all that, and then be able to compare it to the other. But we'll be able to get more reports and all kinds of different reports from there, you know, based on precincts and, you know, and so on, so. And then every day, we are, like, even right now that they started working on the, on the mail-in ballots, every day, Andres posting online on the website the ballots that are going out and the ballots that are coming in. So now we also have to post every day of early voting the names of the people that are coming in to, to vote, the list of the voters. So those, those will all be available online.
What's available, just the numbers?
Names of, of the people who come in to vote, yes. We have to post those now. It's just the list.
But not if somebody, like, whoever worked the mailing, like, if somebody assisted, that, that's not there?
No. They, the people who assist, they do have to sign something. And something new this year also is if somebody brings, but it's like if they bring them in their vehicle and they assist, if they do seven or more, then we have to report that, us, we have to report that to, to the Secretary of State.
If they do what, seven or more?
Seven.
Do they cancel seven or more?
No, no, no. If somebody brings in their vehicle, seven or more people to vote, and they assist them.
You mean in the, the election time?
Yes, in the election time.
Yes.
Yeah, because that's what you were asking, right? Those people that assist, that if their name was going to be...
The people that assist with the mail-in votes?
He's talking about the mail-in.
Oh, oh, no, no. The ma, the mailing votes, we just, yeah, we just put the... No, no, it's just the person who voted.
Just the person who voted.
Just the person who voted. But then during Election Day also and early voting, when we have people that are assisting, they do have to fill something out that they're assisting. They fill out a form also, you know, that they're assisting someone. But now if they bring more than seven or up to seven people or more and they assist those people, then we have to turn in that form to the Secretary of State. So, but we'll let them...
And that is total, right?
Yes, total.
Are we able to request that, that assistance form on a daily basis?
Like the, like...
Like if, if, because there's a list that...
Yeah, we're going to keep, yeah, because we're going to have to keep a log of how many... I, I'm pretty sure it should be public information. I mean, I can find out, but I don't see why not. I'm sure that it's all going to be public information.
When you say assist, and you said bring them in their car and they assist, they have to bring them in their car? They can't request the assistants there and the same person assist them seven times?
That's what we were looking at. Because if they come on their own and they just say, I want so-and-so to assist me, then they can go over the seven. It's just, it says if they bring them in their vehicle and they assist them.
Only if they assist them.
And bring them, both, and bring them in their vehicle, yes.
But if they just brought them in their vehicle and they do the voting on their own, that doesn't have, I mean, there's no, no need for that.
And it's per day or total?
Total.
Total.
And we'll let them know, the ones, the, the people that are assisting, we'll let them know if, you know, that they're, that that will happen and if they're getting to that number, you know, we'll let them, we'll let them know.
So it's only if they meet those two conditions, right?
Yes.
Bring them in their vehicle and they assist.
But anybody could bring as many people as they want to go vote?
Yes.
That's not going to be, it's only if you assist.
And they can still go over the seven. It just means, all we're going to tell them is that we're going to submit their name. You know, it doesn't say that they can't.
Just have to be documented.
Yes.
Mrs. Belmonte, and the assistants can be provided by who?
The assist, the assistants can be provided by anybody who that person, the voter, wants. If they say, somebody brings someone, and usually what we've told the election workers is just verify with the voter and ask them, you want her or him or whatever to help you? Or you want us to help you? Because they can also help. And we, you know, as long as, and I've told them, and no ifs or buts. It's whoever they say and no questions. And when it's the election workers, we recommend that it's two that do it and that the poll, and the poll watchers can watch all of that. And when an election worker helps them, then we usually, we want the poll watcher to then check to make sure that the election worker, you know, marked what the voter was asking them to, to mark.
So there'll be some kind of oversight?
Yes, yes.
No requirements?
I'm sorry?
When somebody asks for assistance, you're supposed to meet certain... You can't just go and ask for assistance.
You're supposed to, but we are not, we can't question it. So if we have a vehicle come in and they park in the curbside, they're going to ring the, the bell that we're going to have there, and they're saying that they need assistance because they can't get off, even if, I've told the election workers, if you know them and you know that it's not true, that they can walk or whatever, you, we can't question it. It says, we don't question it.
It's not too much, okay, that, that's one that can't walk, but you know what? I can't read, and we all know. So I know you're not going to, you're not going to test them there, but those people can later be...
They're signing, the ones that are assisting are signing that they, that what, that whatever they're saying that is true and you've got the list of the, of the reasons. So we can't question it, but they're signing that they're not lying, or that, and...
That they're not lying, that they, that they mean what they want.
Yes, so if they're, if they know it's not true, it's, it's on them. You know, they've just told us, you don't question it. Like, you don't question if they say, you know, because, you know, whatever reason. They give, you don't question it. Because you do have, like, let's say, also kids that just turned 18. You know, they can take their parents because they're like, I've never done this. They, they can't take their parents and say, I want my mom to help me because this is the first time I vote, you know, and that's allowed.
That was my question. On, on the one who helps, is there a requirement? Must that person be at least 18? What is, or is there any requirement on the person who assists?
When they're a relative, they can help for any reason. You know, like, they can just say, I just want my mom to help me. When it's not a relative, then that's when we have the list of like, you know, certain disability or can't read or the language or something. But I don't remember seeing anything on the age, but I can check. But I would assume that it, I mean, that it would have to be an adult, but I can, I can check.
When that list, that somebody's assisting, does it say why that person is assisting? That they, like, what disability they're meeting? Like, if me, I want to question, if I want to question somebody that I say, you know what?[1675.02] Like, if me, I wanna question, if I wanna question somebody that I say, you know what, he's, he doesn't have a disability, does, does the form say that there's a disability?
They have to check the reason why, why they're assisting. I can get you a copy of, I can get you all copies of the, of the forms. That way you can, you can see. And, and if you all need to, you know, share that with, with, you know, people that might be assisting people, that way they know exactly what, what the, you know, what...
But you can't ask them, you can't question it.
No, we can't.
No, if that person says I need assistance, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, I'm assuming if you, outside of, you know, wanna make a formal complaint to them or something like that, yeah.
If, if a candidate wants to question and sees that something's not right, it's happened.
Yes, yeah. It's just as election workers, our clerks and our judges there, we're telling them, if they tell you they can't walk, you just, you let them.
You're not gonna test them there, but if a candidate feels that something's wrong, they have a right.
Yes, yes. And I'll get you copies, that way you can see what's, what are the different reasons that, you know, that they can get assistance for.
And the only time that you can assist them is when they ask you for assistance, not just go in and assist.
Yeah, no, the, the person that's gonna vote needs to say that, that they want assistance. And then we tell our clerks, just, it's okay whoever they want, but just make sure that you let them know that you can also assist them if they, and that they have the choice, whether they want you to assist them or the person that, that brought them or the person that is, that is there. And then they can also choose, if they're in the car, they can choose who they want to go and deposit the ballot for them. If do they want the person that assisted them or do they want the election worker to go in and, and if it's the election worker, we always ask the other person still to go with them so they can see that, that, you know, that they inserted there also.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Belmonte regarding this agenda item? Thank you. Then I'll, I'll entertain a motion for agenda item number 11.
I move to approve agenda item number 11 with the recommendations given to us.
I'll second it.
What are those recommendations?
There, the one that I was, yes, yes.
Everybody got one of those?
Yes.
Okay.
Where's, where?
Okay.
It's in the, the elections room at the Juanita Cantú Gym. Yes, it's the room that we have with a whole bunch of digital fingerprint locks. And that's where the ballot board meets. So, and the ballot board will be done by then, so that's why we recommended that it be, that those same people can then help out with it.
Okay. Is there a second to this motion?
And I'll include copies of the application that the poll watchers need to fill out and the, the class that they have to do online and the certificate and all of that. That way you all can, if you want poll watchers, you all can start working on getting those people trained so that they can be for the election sites and also for the central counting station.
Ms. Belmonte, when is the training for the candidates? That we come in and, and see the machines and...
The public test, that's on Tuesday, the 15th, next week at 2 o'clock.
Okay. We do, is there...
We, it's gonna be posted in the newspaper and we're gonna post it on the bulletin and I'll send you all copies of the, of the notice also, but it's Tuesday, the 15th at 2:00 p.m. At the Juanita Cantú Gym.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor by Trustee Escobar and seconded by Trustee Cruz to approve the recommendations for the following positions. The, the tabul, excuse me, the Counting Station Manager, Mariza Belmonte, the Counting Station Tabulation Supervisor, Andrea Castillo, the Assistant Tabulation Supervisor, Mr. Noé Salinas, the Presiding Judge would be Mr. Roberto Muñiz, and the alternate Presiding Judge will be Mr. Mario Treviño. Okay. All those in favor of this motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
That's again, that's for Election Day.
Correct.
Six in favor and none opposed, one absent, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belmonte. Lot of stuff. Now we'll go to agenda item number 12. This is our superintendent's report. And we'll start off with a presentation by our district executive director for curriculum, Mrs. Diana Salinas, for System of Continuous Growth. Ms. Salinas?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to take this opportunity to provide you with an overview of both our 2024 state accountability ratings as well as our first six weeks' benchmark reports. These are both booklets that we placed right before you. The first one is the accountability that we're gonna be going over and the other one includes the first six weeks' data analysis. I give you my word that we won't go through the entire booklet. We're gonna try to sum it up. But nonetheless, providing you with, with essential data. State data indicates that more than 5 million students were enrolled in Texas Public Schools in the 23-24 school year and students took nearly 8 million STAR assessments in reading, math, science, and social studies. Of all the assessments taken, 75% met the Approaches grade level standard or above, 48% met the Meets grade level standard or above, and 20% met the Masters grade level standard. This year's STAR results show across-the-board improvements in RLA grades 3 to 8 and English 1 and 2 from 2023, with significant gains in Algebra 1. The 2024 state results, however, show declining mathematics and science performance across all tested grade levels. The decrease in math proficiency again is indicative of the significant challenges that persist for students in this subject area following the COVID-19 pandemic. Student performance in math has not yet recovered to pre-pandemic levels, making it clear that recovery will require a sustained effort to improve student outcomes. In spring 2024, approximately 3,800 Roma ISD students in grades 3 to 12 took part in the State of Texas Assessment of Academic Readiness, or STAR, and of course, assessments. At grades 3 to 8, all students are tested again in math and reading. Students are also tested in science at grades 5 and 8 and in social studies in grade 8. EOC assessments include Algebra 1, Biology, English 1, English 2, and US History. At this time, we'd like to provide you with a preliminary summary of our 2024 EOC and STAR data. These scores are the result of a strong collaborative effort between the entire Roma ISD family, students, parents, educators, and leadership. They exemplify the hard work, passion, and commitment that goes into the educational process at Roma ISD. This year's results show that RLA and English 1 and 2 demonstrated improvement across most grade levels. The percentage of our students meeting grade level expectations in 3 to 8 RLA and English 1 and 2 rose from 1 through 9 percentage points respectively. The percentage of students who scored at the Masters level increased by 1 to 11 points across grade levels. Our 2024 preliminary results indicate the percentage of students meeting grade level expectations in 3 to 8 Math and Algebra 1 rose from 3 to 13 percentage points respectively, with 8th grade showing a significant 11% point increase and Algebra 1 indicating a 13% point increase. Masters level performance increased between 1 to 12 percentage points in grades 4, 7, and 8 and Algebra 1, with Algebra 1 demonstrating a significant 12% point increase. The percentage of students meeting grade level expectations in Science rose from 2 to 5 points in 8th grade Science and Biology. 8th grade Science also demonstrated a 2% point increase in student scoring at the Masters level. Although the issuance of 2024 A through F accountability ratings remains pending and is subject to change based on judicial rulings, districts have been provided with data that can be used to determine preliminary standings, and that's what I'll be sharing with you. AF accountability ratings are based on three domains: student achievement, school progress, and closing the gaps. Key findings include Roma ISD has an overall B rating with a score of, we had calculated with our TEAL report, 85. However, Mr. Gonzalez attended a superintendent's meeting at the region and they're showing that we're at an 86 out of a possible 100 points, placing us second throughout the districts in the region. So that was an amazing accomplishment, so we're gonna stick to that 86.
Yes, we are.
Six of our campuses earned an overall A rating, one campus earning a B, and nine of our campuses, all our campuses together, all earning between an A, B, or C ratings. In 3rd grade reading, with a score of 95% district-wide, we scored above the region, which was at 75, and the state average at 72. In 3rd grade math, which was also a 95, six of our six campuses scored above the region, which was at 69% and the state was at 68. In 4th grade reading, we scored as a district 96. Six of, of our six campuses again scoring above the region rate, which was at 82% and the state average at 79%. In 4th grade math, with a score of 94% district-wide, six out of our six campuses scored above the region, which was at 71, and the state average of 67. In 5th grade reading, we had a district-wide score of 94. Six, again, out of our six elementary campuses scored above the region, which was at 79, and the state average of 78. In 5th grade math, with a score of 96, our six, out of our six campuses scored above the region, which was at 79, and the state average of 75. In 5th grade science, we had a 92% district-wide. Six of, out of our six campuses again scored above the region, which was at 60, and the state average was at 56. In 8th grade reading, with a score of 81%, both campuses scored above the region, which was at 79, and the state average of 78. Our Algebra 1 scores, which were at 89, demonstrated a 10% growth from 2023 scores, scoring above the region, which was at 82, and the state average of 79. Our Biology scores demonstrated a 7% growth from 2023 scores as well. So again, our preliminary overall rating is a B based on the overall score of 86 for the 23-24 school year. The district received the scale scores and corresponding letter grades for the three domains as follows. Domain 1, which is our student achievement domain, was at a 79. We had a rating of C, and that's basically telling us what our students know and can do. Our Domain 2 score was at an 86, which places with a rating of a B, and that's our school progress domain, which basically is showing us how far our students have come. And our Domain 3 score of an 84 gave us a rating of a B as well. That's our closing the gap domain, basically indicating how different student groups are performing with an overall performance score of an 86, which gives Roma ISD a rating of A, B. Again, there's, a hearing is scheduled to determine the release of AF accountability ratings on, it's scheduled for February the 10th. So here's hoping that we get more information then. As of now, these are all considered preliminary scores. In, in the book here, you'll find data that will include, if you look at the first tab, we have included our longitudinal data, which will start with 2019, which was pre-COVID. We have individual campus information as well as our district information. And here you can see a comparison between 2019 through 2024. You'll, what is in green will indicate the difference. If it's in green, you'll see that it's growth. The yellow will see, state that, you know, showing that we remain the same. The red will indicate whether there was a, a particular loss there in that particular grade level. What I have is a heading on the very top. You'll see the district score and the region score as well as the state. So this is basically provided for you for the district and every individual campus from elementary to the, excuse me, to the high school. The next tab will show you our student performance level report, and that will basically indicate how students are doing in every single campus as far as performance is concerned, how many kids are scoring at the Masters level, how many are at the Meets level, and how many children are at the Approaches level. The next tab that we have there is basically our English Language Proficiency Status Report. The targets are placed there as a key. The target, of course, for high school being a 34, for our middle schools a 44, and our elementary schools would be a 49. We have provided that information to you for each of our individual campuses. The next tab will show our TELPIS composite scores.
Which tab is that, ma'am?
The red one.
The one...
Okay, yes.
I wanna say, the fourth tab, yeah. Right.
Different colors.
And within that tab, we also have the information for our STAR alternate information and TELPIS alternate composite also for our special pops there. The tab before the last is, is what I wanna share with you. And again, I put the disclaimer there that, you know, the issuance again of 2024 AF ratings remains pending and is subject to change based on judicial rulings. But what you will find there is a preliminary 2024 Accountability Report card for each campus. And the last one that you'll find on that tab is our District Report Card.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On that last one, though, for the district roll-up.
Yes, sir.
Why is Domain 2 divided into A and B?
It, you, you, sir, you get to choose, and I'll have the resource there as well. You'll, you'll get the best of the, of Domain 2. You choose whether, again, you're looking at progress or... It, it's like A and B. You choose the best one and that's the one that they'll put for you there. That you'll use the best of, of whether it be A or Domain, A or B.
All our elementaries were, received an A, right?
Yes, ma'am. One of our, our middle schools, yes. And if you notice, in, in the middle schools, we can go back to Roma Middle. They're very, very close to, they're at an 89, I wanna say, yes. And our Ramiro Barera Middle School is at 79 also. And I wanna say they're one point away, and what we shared in the high school as well. So really, really close. I wanna take this opportunity, you know, this is information that we've shared with our campus leadership and we've told them, again, because of all, you know, we are being measured. Also, student performance is big, but student growth is even bigger. So they have the opportunity to increase this if we pay special attention. Again, laser-like focus on our kids that are retested, our 14-16 population, and I wanna assure you that that's basically what we're doing. When we did a study, you know, the, the middle schools have a total of, i- if we put all the children together, we wanna say in, in Ramiro Barera alone, 6th grade, we had 41 children, in 7th grade, 68 children, and in 8th grade, 99 children that we're tracking. If we look at Roma Middle, we had a total of 193 students. If we get these kids to cross over, you know, one level, we get a quarter of a point and this is what they consider the icing on the cake. So can you imagine, when we were discussing all these, we have a possibility of, of acquiring a lot of extra points. So emphasis will be placed on this because of that, you know, because of that. We wanna make sure that, you know, getting there, I think it hurts even more when you're just that close.
Ms. Salinas, I know that you mentioned that right, right now we're in the region, we're ranked at number two with our, with the results from Roma ISD, but obviously everything's pending judicial rulings. Would that, may that affect our position as a, as a district? Or would it affect everybody equally? You know what I'm saying? Like, are they gonna change, like, the percentage of the domains? And some schools are ranked higher than others?
Right now, because it's blocked due to litigation, we really don't know what direction they're gonna take. You know, it would be amazing if they say, you know what, let's help districts a bit, you know. I know that you guys, you had a question last time that we presented scores based on, on our math scores, kind of needing some help in, in the secondary level. And that's kind of a statewide issue or, so, you know, all of these things are, are being taken into consideration. So here's hoping that something does come up that would help, you know, our campuses cross that.
Right, but, but I'm asking kind of like, okay, everybody gets five extra points on your test, type of, type of deal that, you know, we would go from a B to an A and, you know, everybody moves up, but we still stay in second, in second position? Or if they just say, you know what, no, we're gonna go back to putting more emphasis on the elementaries or the, a higher percentage on the elementaries?
Right now, we are, it's based on, on proportional rating and our high school is, is the one that has the most weight.
Okay, so at this point, we really don't know.
At this point, you know, I wish I could clarify that even further, but we really don't know. It's, it's all, you know, we are scheduled for February the 10th. We have been having various webinars with our lead forward. We have the Accountability Connect. We are scheduled to attend the assessment conference and here's hoping we have more or find more information so that we can definitely provide that to you.
And one more question. We're, we're at a, I guess we're ranked number two within the, the region. That's with the new guidelines or with the new requirements that TDA released, right?
Yes, yes.
So with those new requirements, we're at a very good standing? So with those new requirements, we're at a very good standard.
Yes, that's.
So congratulations, everybody.
That's, everybody together is doing.
Congratulations, everybody.
An amazing job. The commitment of the campuses is, is amazing. And, and like I said, all of this information has been shared. Um, we've had the opportunity to meet with most principals already and everybody has a plan in place. And I'll share that plan after, right after I share the six-weeks course with you.
We, we attended the conference, uh, two weeks ago and we all were very happy and surprised, uh, of how many people approached us to recognize our school of how well our students were doing.
The performance overall academically, um, fine arts, musical, you know, overall. Overall, we are literally on the map.
Yes.
Literally on the map.
It, it, it's amazing.
Seventy-five million dot work or seventy-four million dot work.
Yes.
Como se llamaba?
It's the seventy.
They showed us an interactive map and we are literally on the map of being the, one of the best districts in, in the region. You know, in the, in the nation.
People would walk towards us and, and tell us how, how our, our, how good our school was doing.
And, and it's amazing because not too long ago, uh, you know, we would attend conferences, you know, in Austin and, and people would ask, you know, where is Roma? Now Roma has made, I want to say, a, a name for itself. So we're, we're beyond.
And we're very happy.
Blessed, you know, we're blessed with an incredible team, incredible support. Um, and everybody working together, everybody working collaboratively, I think. Um, Mr. Betis, I know you were asking about why domain two was, was, um, and, and I want to say I, I have it here in my notes. One is based basically, the school progress domain, which is domain two, is, is broken down into two. And what is, is checking on what, how much kids grew academically. And the other domain is, is how the kids, based, the same domain, but two parts, how the kids are doing in, in comparison to, um, others similar to them.
I'd say some other schools, in other words, in comparison to them.
It, it, yes, with, with similar, uh, you know, the same, the same, uh, pops, you know, same ED pops, similar to, to that.
And of course, this, what we sometimes forget is that we're in, we're in competition with our region. We're in competition with, with all school districts, including those that, uh, that might not be as large and/or might not have the varied extracurricular, uh, programs that a regular public school would have, am I correct?
With the adversities, adversities that we, that we challenge.
With that we face, yes. It's.
Yeah, well, so the, what makes, that's what I, uh, I, what I was alluding to was that that's what makes the number two ranking that much special, that much more special. I think that, um, hats off to our campus directors, our campus principals and, uh, your team, of course, uh, for compiling all this information, but our campus principals and our teachers, all our staff.
Everybody.
Uh, this is amazing. It's a, I know that, um, all of this is preliminary, but, uh, it pretty much is targeting these, uh, this is probably what it's going to be.
And we don't settle for number two, sir.
No.
We've made a commitment.
I don't, I don't expect you to, ma'am.
He said we're in competition with other schools.
But I think we are, we are, we may be number two, but we are actually number one in comparison to
Yes.
our, the rest of the school districts that are similar.
I want to say it's a different population. Um, Mr. Gonzalez has, I want to say they, you know, they're blanked out. The names are not, the other school districts are not, they just include ours, but, uh, you know, it's.
A lot of these school districts that I'm mentioning that are not like us, uh, they, uh, they attract, uh, what might be considered, uh, maybe the cream of, of, of the crop.
It's a more selective, it's a more selective.
They're more selective.
The one that's number one is more selective.
Yes.
That's better wording, thank you.
Yes.
But, but.
I was going to say.
To add what he was saying, was saying that we're in comp- competition with other school districts. We're in competition with our own, like on our own.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Every year, it's been better and better and better. And I know, you know, with everything that is being done, it's just going to get, you know, much better.
Well, i- it's a credit also to, to the, what we've, your team has been able to develop, uh, in conjunction with the administration. And that campus principals have bought into it. And more importantly, our teachers have bought into it as well. So that is the leadership of our campus principals. We're proud of them as well.
Beyond proudness.
Uh, very proud of the work that they are, each of them are doing and very proud of our teachers.
Thank you, sir.
But very proud of our students and the parents that support them.
Yes, it's, it's.
It's a team effort.
It's a collaborative effort, yes.
It's all a team effort.
Yes. Um, this is our first six weeks data and like I said, I'll just provide you with, with a brief overview. Again, to us, it's, it's really important that we go through in-depth data analysis. And, um, just going to share our district, uh, data. Just wanted to make a point, these scores might not appear as high as we'd like them to, but then our cutoff points because of our high expectations are at a seventy, eighty, ninety. We're not using the state standard cut, you know, the state cut points at this point. We'll start using them for comparison purposes, uh, for our first at-bat, which would be held right before the fir- the ending of the first semester. This is, this is totally on a seventy, eighty, ninety, um, system, cutoff system. And we can start off with the ISD for the, uh, the elementary together. Uh, our third graders, we tested three hundred sixty-three children and six, we're at sixty-eight percent. In other words, sixty-eight percent of our kids mastered at the seventy percent. Our fourth graders came in at sixty-nine percent. Our fifth graders came in at sixty-seven percent. So our total accountable grades are at a sixty-eight percent right now at the end of the first six weeks in RLA. In math, our third graders came in with a seventy-seven percent, our fourth graders at a seventy-four percent, and our fifth graders at a seventy-two percent, putting our total accountable grades at the elementary at a seventy-four percent. Our fifth graders are the only ones held accountable for science at the elementary. And they came in with an eighty-eight percent at the seventy percent cut point. Here we have how many kids scored an eighty or better, seventy percent of them did. And right now, forty-three percent are, of our kids in science are scoring above a ninety.
Ms. Salinas, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Where exactly are you?
Uh, this is just basically the first, the first six weeks. The very first sheet in the, well, after the cover sheet for the first six weeks.
I'm always different.
And then it's the first sheet and the, behind, the, the back page of the first sheet, the first sheet of data.
Is it there, Mr. Betis?
Where are we now?
Yeah, yeah, that's the elementary, the RLA math, and then I flipped it over for the science.
I need, um, okay, I just need pre-K directions.
It's all, it's all good, sir.
No, it's because the first, his first page is different than everybody else's.
Oh, his booklet is different, maybe?
I saw, that's why.
That's why, sir, that's why, you got a special one.
Someone over there made a mistake, I don't know.
It's all good.
And then go back, Ms. Salinas.
Yes, ma'am.
Eighty-eight percent were at the, uh, approachable level, right?
Yes, which is, in, in our, uh, our system that we're using right now is eighty-eight percent of these children scored above a seventy.
Okay.
And the actual cut point is, is lower when we use the state cut points.
Right.
Right.
So forty-three percent of these, Ms. Cruz, are already scoring ninety or better. And seventy percent of these kids are scoring eighty or better. And then right after this long sheet, this is basically what we use for the campuses for comparison across. You know, everybody can see their own. This is, uh, a comparison report for the first six weeks reading. It'll include pre-kinder through fifth grade. Um, everyone is reported there. Right after that, we'll have our middle schools data analysis. And again, using the cut points of seventy, eighty, ninety. RLA at the sixth grade is coming in at twenty-two percent, again with the seventy, eighty, ninety cut points. Our seventh graders are at thirty-eight percent, our eighth graders are at forty-two percent. Total accountable for the middle schools are at thirty-four percent. That's in RLA. Then we have our math scores. Sixth graders at thirty-two percent, seventh grade at sixty-seven percent, and our eighth graders at sixty-two percent, giving our total accountable grades at the middle school for math at fifty-four. Eighth grade is the only one held accountable for science and we're at a sixty-six percent there. Our social studies scores are at a fifty-five percent. Eighth grade being the only one that is, um, accountable for, for the scores. Then if you flip a few pages, we have the high school data analysis. And here we are again with our EOCs. And I just want to say, we do, you, we use this data analysis to help us guide our instruction and provide us with direction. We know there's a lot to be done, but this is basically why we do this, you know, so that we can get or establish direction. Our English one children are currently coming in at eighty, at eighteen percent. We, if we combine our retesters together, we'll, we'll be at fourteen percent. Our English two is at nineteen percent, total accountable is sixteen percent. Again, if we use the state standards, these will be a lot higher, but we're shooting for high expectations. We'd rather see it this way. You know, and, and, and instilling in our, in our students, you have to score, you know, shoot for that seventy. You have to go higher than that, seventy, eighty, ninety is what we're aiming for. I want to add that in comparison to last year, we were at the single digits. So we've sho- we've seen growth there and we are determined to see more growth. Like I said, uh, systems are in place.
Excuse me, ma'am, do you share that, uh, that information, not this information, but yes and no? But, uh, uh, the, how you're managing this, that, that we are scoring, uh,
Yes.
from, from what we're, our scoring is that much more, uh, demanding, much more rated rather than the state? So the teachers know this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, everybody's aware and they share this during their campus PLCs.
Yeah. I don't know if, maybe the.
Is there some type of a report that, that they can generate at the campus level?
Yes.
As to how many students they need to be at a certain, I mean, for the students to score at a certain level to meet what's here? If they don't report, Miss, and it tells you how many more students do you need to be at this level?
To be, let's say, at, if we want to be, uh, we, we try playing with that report to be at, uh, a higher level, like tweaking in numbers. Yes, there's templates that you can use to, to play with those numbers. Yes, ma'am. Then going into math, you'll notice that we're at a seventy-seven percent again, using that seventy percent cutoff. In science, we're at seventy-seven in high school and in U.S. history, we're at sixty-eight percent. And again, they will, and the campuses have that, you know, option. And I know that some of the campus principals do, where they're, for their own information, you know, where are we actually at based on the standards that were set for the twenty-four test? And like I said, we will be presenting that data as well once we go a little further into the, the school year, closer to the start.
These, um, these values or they're just for the TEACs that were taught for that first six weeks, right?
Basically, yes, and that's part of the process where we go in and align and ensure that everything that was, uh, that is going to be assessed has to be ta- uh, taught. The other set of data that we present with, the campuses with, and they have the opportunity to, to view the student responses, to pull out how the kids are writing as far as ECR, because again, the writing is a big component of the RLA test. So we provide them with how their children are doing per grade level, you know, how many kids, uh, tested. For instance, we start off with the third grade ECR. And these are the, you know, the different, we do this throughout high school, uh, starting with the elementary all through high school. Um, for example, campus one is DGG. How many kids did you have scoring, uh, a one, a two, and all the way to the ten? You know, that provides you with the data. And if they want to go in and say, okay, I had nine kids scoring at an eight, let me go pull out those and see that. We want to make sure that everybody is, is adhering to the rubric and everybody is basically grading or rating the children the same way. So that we can all be on, on the same page. I also want to add that we tested our pre-K three for the first time and they did very well. They did very well as well. Uh, you know, there was some hesitancy there, but again, we have to demonstrate progress for them and, and they're ready, they're ready. The, the level of rigor is very, very similar. We, we looked at, at their assessments, very, very similar to what the pre-K four is doing. And they're coming along, they're doing really, really well. Um, just wanted to talk to you, I, I just mentioned, um, our, our plan, the plan that we have in place, where, you know, we have a plan of action. And, uh, of course, we have a building capacity initiative, which includes non-negotiable PLCs, um, pro- providing our teachers with professional development opportunities. We have reading academies, we have the Master Teacher Series, uh, Sharon Wells, uh, technology training, the Lead Forward Series, Carnegie Math. And I want to say they had their first Carnegie meeting because the state is telling us now that our sixth graders have to go through an advanced curriculum. So we, um, the district was able to purchase the Carnegie Math Solutions, which is, um, meant to be used for, we have the sixth grade regular program and our sixth grade advanced math program. And it's going to start to be implemented the second six weeks. So they had the first, uh, training, uh, yesterday with the teachers, the staff development training. And they're going to be having ongoing trainings as we're moving along. They're even having tutoring sessions where the trainers are actually going to come on campus and, and offer some, some support. And we were very fortunate to, um, be chosen to, uh, be, to, we were awarded the Bloom, uh, literacy camps. And people from the region make up this Bloom, um, partnership. And they've been providing our campuses from the elementaries to the high school with a lot of support for, um, our ECR, our writing. They even have science, uh, strategy trainings. Uh, they've been very, very supportive of our whole, you know, building capacity initiative. In some campuses, they're also scheduled to train our children, so camps with children. So that's part of what's going on right now. Uh, non-negotiable in-depth data analysis processes have been also implemented to be used as instructional tools to help us guide instruction. They help us identify weaknesses and bring laser-like focus to areas of need. We have accelerated instruction opportunities before, during, and after school. Instructional resources and resource banks that are allowed to, uh, that are, uh, completely aligned to STAR two-point-O and TELPAS, uh, including Sharon Wells, and these are online, uh, support systems. Uh, Sirius, Education Galaxy, IXL. We are very, very fortunate, we were awarded the math grant. And they provided us, provided our district with free IXL licenses. We asked for more and I want to say we are at a total of about three thousand eight hundred seventy licenses now. So we're able to cover most of the elementary all the way to, um, Algebra I. Free of charge, all they're asking for is fidelity of implementation, that we use these. They're asking, I want to say fifteen questions a week and they're monitoring that. So that's been really helpful. We have Amplify against data-proofed curriculum, uh, Eureka, Summit K-12. Clever, we're using Lowman Education and, and yes, Lead Forward as well. Uh, providing students with the opportunities to experience the, uh, the testing platform that mirrors Cambium. And I think that's been something that has helped our district a whole lot, where our kids have had the exposure to test online with both the T-FAR and the EdSite, which is part of the Sharon Wells program. So our kid, there's no surprises for them, what, you know, they're going to test and they're prepared for that because they've been exposed to that. Um, our T-PES goals, we've been meeting, uh, beginning of the year conferences with the principals and all their goals are centered around campus areas of need as indicated by student assessment data. And yes, like you were asking, Ms. Barera, um, we have to ensure alignment between the written, taught, and tested curriculum and by revisiting, um, our curriculum maps on a six-week basis. In fact, we've already met to prepare for the second six weeks.
Ms. Salinas.
Yes.
Uh, these resources that you've mentioned and you've listed, oh, I'm, I'm interested in, in whether or not, um, we, we have enough resources to, uh, for, uh, um, to immerse our, our young kids either from elementary on, but especially at the higher grade levels with writing skills. Uh, is, is this something that, that we're doing?
Yes, sir. In fact, like I said, uh, Blooms has been aiding us, or the, the region has been, uh, supporting our high school with the writing as well. And we just, uh, talked to the dean this afternoon as to how they're going to go about implementing what they're learning with, with Bloom. We're also, um, in the process of, of trying to renew our Sirius, which is going to, you know, all the way to the high school. It goes all the way to high school. So there's definitely, you know, a need. We've, our focus has been more, um, with the secondary at this point, trying to get them the resources that they need. Cause that's where we see that we need, um, you know, more support.
Technology is great, ma'am. Uh, I, I, I am technology challenged, of course, but that's my generation. But, uh, I, I think that, that technology works against some things and, and, and that is the basic focus on writing, uh, because it's easy to go to the key. keyboard, and, and
Yes.
Just to be doing that, but I see a lot of young people who are graduating even, and, um, this is just an observation, and I'm just saying that I see kids still printing versus, uh, cursive writing, and, uh, and I wonder about that, I don't know if we're doing them a disservice in general.
Well, it's because everything's changing now, they're implementing all the AI.
They changed for some time where there was little focus, uh, Mr. Perez, on actual penmanship skills, and I know that at the elementaries, there was a strong, you know, our urge, we, we really wanted to focus to ensure that our reading, our kids mastered the reading, they mastered the math, so sometimes because of time, we kind of let go, but there's no way you can do that now, because we're being held accountable for writing. And I want to say that, uh, as we were meeting with, eh, in, with our curriculum teams, uh, that was one of the first observations that they did, this is, we used to have kids that all they would do is IDK, you know, I don't know, when they were trying to submit responses, and it's, it's changing.
I gotta Google those.
It's, it's, it's changing now. Uh, they feel, at the secondary, you know, we were with the middle school teachers, where they see that their kids are better prepared, because our, our goal is to use the same writing framework district-wide, you know, what, um, our coaches went through some training, uh, Cassidy from Bloom is doing basically the same training, so we're trying to put that approach, you know, and establish it district-wide, and it's having an impact, because like I said, our middle schools are seeing that, and here's hoping, you know, our high school is going to be seeing that as well, because at one point, they were just finding it easy, and you know, instead of responding to anything, they just, I don't know, you know, so. So focus is there, and improving more than anything, that's why we are, um, again, making sure that we, we take a look at how our kids are coming out as far as their ECR, there's, that's being analyzed on a, on a six-week basis as well.
Ms. Alena, this is an excellent report, uh, thank you and your staff
Thank you, and...
for compiling all this data.
Yes, sir, and if, you know, I know that I just, you know, basically provided you with, with the brief summary, but if there's any questions, please, you know, don't hesitate to give us a call.
Thank you very much.
Just, uh, just an FYI, FYI for you, all of you, us board members are required to take a training session on data.
Awesome.
And we just went through a training of a three-hour training, Miss.
Most of us did.
On, on data.
Yes. And, and like I said, you know, it's, it's really important, because we, we can have all these reports, but it's like, what are we going to do with the data that makes the most difference, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll continue with safety and security, um, our district director for safety, Mr. Elifonso Saldivar, now will give us a brief report.
I'll try and make it brief. I do got three pages, though. Now, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Just a quick, uh, uh, update, we continue to train substitutes, substitutes get trained, are getting trained on Raptor system, the sys, the DVA that's coming up is requiring us to train the substitutes or have the system, and by doing that, we're using the flat panels, the smart boards, and the laptops, so they're getting that at the ca, the classroom. The, uh, the, uh, the intruder detection audits for, uh, the region have started, two campuses have been visited so far, and out of those two, no findings, so we started off on the right foot. We did receive a notice through Sentinel that auditors will be here in November also. Uh, another thing that we've done so far is, uh, an assessment of each campus, it's requiring us that we have to have the numbers, number, the campuses numbered entrances clockwise, some campuses are, three are not, so maintenance department will go ahead and renumber them clockwise, because they're contra-clockwise. So we also did an assessment on numbers that are missing, that are broken, and they have been ordered, so we're waiting on that, so we can get that going. Also, back in May, we met, uh, it's a twofold thing for, uh, the, with law enforcement, local law enforcement, we met to provide them maps, ex, well, provide them the campus maps, and also to, uh, provide a time for, to do walkthroughs. Uh, so back in May, on the eighth, we did High School PAC, uh, we did, uh, Emavera and Roma Middle School, then on the ninth, we provided the time again, and August twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, we did the rest of the campuses. So DPS, uh, Customs, our, our PD, Roma PD, they walked the campuses, they were doing radio checks to see, uh, in particular DPS, to see if radios are being receptive, the reception inside is good, uh, we're doing that. We are also, uh, our officers continue to focus on school safety, uh, obviously presence at the campuses, the door checks that they do on a daily basis, and of course, at school events. Another thing that, uh, we did, it, each campus has a Stop the Bleed kit, as we do here also, we are working, uh, on, um, we ordered, the district ordered twelve Stop the Bleeds for each campus, extra ca, extra Stop the Bleed, we will continue to order more as the year goes by, and we will get buildings that are missing, example, uh, special ed department building, federal programs, and extra ones, uh, particularly at the high schools, being that it's so big, we want to get more Stop the Bleed kits at different areas, and they're being currently installed, and, um, Assistant Chief, uh, Mador is assisting administration to get them installed in a particular location, so that's happening right now. Um, Roma ISD police officers, security guards have gotten trained on the use of tourniquets, applying tourniquets, we're also in the works of planning, uh, trainings for staff members at the campuses on, train them how to actually apply the tourniquets, that's something that is also required, and we have to submit on DVA, on Sentinel, excuse me, the actual, uh, signage, so we're working on that also. Uh, back, eh, last board meeting, we presented the Behavioral Threat Assessment Committee, that's, be, people are already starting to turn in their maps at the campus levels, ma, maps, no, not the maps, their certificates at the campus levels at Central Office, so that's going on right now. We've also done our first safety meeting, in October, the third, we, we brought, uh, the committee got together, we presented, and, uh, had some, um, recommendations on the Stop the Bleed kits, so we're going with that. Maps have been digitized, updated and digitized by the IT department, and they've been distributed to local law enforcement, we will do another update on them, uh, hopefully in the next weeks or so, once we have the numbers outside the campuses correct on all of them, we'll do another one and send them out to the campus, to the police officers. District has gone out for RFPs on radios, that's being worked on as we speak. Parking permits have been spent out, human trafficking prevention is going to be starting in November, because October is very busy with Red Ribbon, fire prevention, so we're going to move it over to, uh, November. Uh, we also have, we have started to submit information on Sentinel, uh, so that way, it has to be submitted two weeks before the January twenty-second visit, but we have started to submit and update everything that we need as far as we can so far. Um, we also submitted already the basic plan and the cyber security annex, that's something that's done every year, I know that I sent out, some information to Mr. Perez to sign and Superintendent, uh, so we have that in place, it was submitted October the, the fourth. We're also working on talking to DPS, specifically the communication supervisor, so they can come in and work, uh, I guess, checking radios inside the campuses to see where our, where we can improve. And, uh, last time they came in, it's pretty good, we have, we do have some campuses that need a little bit more, we need to work with, but for the most part, it's, it's working. And that's that, unless you have questions.
On January twenty-sixth, that is...
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second is the what?
The DVA, the District Vulnerability Assessment.
And we're...
Will be in compliance.
Well, actually, kind of the first cohort that gets it, right?
Actually, we're, we're, out of the, I guess, the twelve-hundred-plus districts in the state, we're one of the fifty, first fifty to get on it.
We got it, we got it in the first round, we're hoping we get it in the second, third round, but first round.
Or maybe in four years, but we did.
But we're going to do good.
We, we should be good, I mean, we have, I think we only have to worry a little bit about just the human element of submitting certificates, working on those things. Uh, we are expecting, I'm expecting, we're expecting to do good, but like anything else, they will give us the opportunity to correct, and it's not going to be like before, I guess, where they would say, fix it, good for you, no, they're gonna, Mr. Gonzalez will, uh, sign a, a plan of action that will say, you have a certain amount of time to fix it, and they'll come back and visit us, and, and we go on for that, and then we won't get audited again until four years. So we, we should be good.
Mr. Saldivar.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being proactive, Superintendent, and the school district, I feel that our students are very well saved, save, safety is, is a big issue, and thank you for being proactive instead of reactive, and I appreciate that, we appreciate that.
I think it's a team effort, I know it's, everyone, uh, from the campus, our police officers, our Roma ISD partners, uh, Roma PD officers that come in also and assist our, our officers, i, it's the campuses too, I know that's one of the things that, uh, a lot of signs that we, like, we tell the campuses, you can't just rely on the administration, there, there are several, but more, there's more of you than them, so do your part on, on, on the safety, but so it's a collaborative, uh, partnership.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Saldivar, for this report. We'll move on to letter C, positive culture and collaborative climate, uh, our district superintendent, Mr. Gonzalez, will give this report.
Yes, I'll give a report on, uh, positive culture and collab, uh, collaborative climate, these are things that are happening, uh, around the district in the month of October that provides a positive culture and a collaborative climate. One thing I'd like to say is, uh, last week, as I was at the high school, uh, our Roma City Police Department, uh, was making presentations, uh, to our law enforcement classes, and just giving them an overview of what, uh, the police department, how it functions and how it runs, and the possibility of maybe you can use it as a recruiting tool, tool to maybe some kids wanting to pursue that, uh, profession as they get out. Uh, so, uh, other things that are happening around the district is that we had the homecoming parade, which, uh, took place on October the third, and several schools and teams participated to showcase Gladiator Nation pride, uh, that is a positive culture there, right? Roma ISD supported our students at the Miss, uh, Roma Pageant by providing bags and goodie items, uh, to cheer on, uh, the girls that were, uh, competing, uh, Delia, G, DGG Elementary and RCS, uh, helped donate some items for the goodie bags for the girls, and the district, we, uh, worked with the city by hosting the event, um, at the performing, at the UNIS Performing Arts Center and providing technical support. Um, we celebrated World Teacher Day on October the fourth, encouraging schools and parents to celebrate their teachers and students to give, uh, their teachers, uh, thank you notes, the district provided a cake and cooler bags to all teachers, as well as highlighted all teachers on social media during the week. On October the seventh to October the eleventh is Fire Safety Week, and a lot of our elementaries are going through those presentations right now, and we'd like to thank the City of Roma Fire Department and the Escobadas Fire Department for working with our schools to give our scoo, students a life-saving training. And October eleventh, um, we're hosting the annual trunk or treat, uh, bringing together more than sixty, I guess, vendors, schools, departments, and businesses all together, uh, to kick off Halloween with our children, so you all are invited to go there with us and be there, help pass out some candies. And, and October the fifteenth, we're joining, uh, the City of Roma PD for National Light Out to provide goodies, uh, to our students and remind them that law enforcement is their friend, and creating, uh, and creating a safe community. Uh, we kick off this, uh, fall, our performing arts program, uh, for the first time ever, uh, with, on October the sixteenth, the orchestra concert, um, and these follows weeks, uh, there will be including performances from the band and the choir students as well, this is the first time we've ever done this, uh, for fall concerts, which adds to our December and Spring Concert Series, so that's something nice that's going to be out there, uh, and we're also happy with our, our elementary, uh, uh, music classes, they're doing real good, and we got to see some performances or little things that they do in the class, right, so we're hoping to have a performance down the road, right, so that's, that's the goal, so we see a lot of good things happening there. On October eighteenth, we'll hold our annual cancer awareness game with, uh, uh, to give out information and awareness, uh, uh, about cancer. Uh, we'll celebrate school bus safety, Safety Week on October twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, and our transportation department is gearing up for their annual safety trainings at each elementary school to ensure our students are prepared for all their trips throughout the year, and we're also joining the entire nation in celebrating Red Ribbon Week from the October twenty-third to the thirty-first, as we remind our children through social media and school activities to choose to be drug-free. On October thirty-first, you're invited to come here to, uh, board members, you're invited to come here, uh, to Central Office, as we hold our annual administration billing Halloween Walk, some of us will be in our costumes as we compete, right? Uh, Mr. Garza will not win this.
Some of us are already in costume.
And through, uh, we're hosting the fourth and fifth graders and the special education unit students, uh, from every campus to share the Halloween spirit. We're also excited to see entries, uh, for our Roma ISD middle school Christmas card contests, uh, which are due at the end of the month, and our department always enjoys seeing the amazing artwork that our students, uh, from middle school do. And, uh, we also are working with the city, uh, of Roma, so they can host their, uh, Roma Fest at our, uh, Roma ISD Veterans Hall on October twentieth, and we're working together to help create a great event to celebrate our community. So those are a lot of things, uh, that are taking place in the month of October that help provide a positive culture and collaborative climate, and, uh, also, one thing today, I, I met with STC, and this is a collaborative climate with, uh, our, uh, post-secondary, uh, uh, classes that our students can take, and basically, we talked about doing enrollment, and we're talking about our, our, uh, uh, I'm a little brain-dead right now, I mean, ahead and I'll go, we're talking about the dual enrollment classes with our students, right, our, the, the students that are going through, so as we start with our Cohort Three this year for our early college academy, there we go, that's what I wanted to say, just didn't want to come out, the early college academy, we're in Cohort Three right now, and they're juniors, but what we're working on right now is working with STC to help provide, uh, the opportunity for some of these students that maybe didn't, uh, uh, wasn't able to take some courses during the school year because of the activities they're in, where we can have some of these courses in summer, where they can take, uh, maybe the Spanish, uh, course, uh, for college credit in summer, so not only are we, will we be offering them during the school year, we're looking at giving them opportunities to take these classes in summer, and, and they would be here at STC very, very close to our school, so just giving kids more opportunities, so our collaboration is there with STC and seeing what we can do to provide our students with, uh, the best opportunity to get dual-credit classes, and , uh, we're real happy with, with STC and working us in that aspect. They were also very happy, if I'll get it to, uh, somewhere in the back over here, with our emergency medical technology basic certificate, so these are the kids that can work in the ambulances, right? So we're going to have an event somewhere near the future, celebrating, uh, uh, the, this process and, and getting it going, and making sure that we have students there, they're real happy, because Roma ISD was, was able to get ten students, we have ten students there, and, uh, eh, they're very happy with, uh, the collaboration we're taking pla, that's taking place with us and them, because that's a, an area of need in our, in our, uh, community. Uh, there's also an area in need of electricians, we talked about maybe bringing that program into, into our school district, and I also said that, you know, we also need to look at seeing that we can get our kids with certificates in plumbing, because you all know, it's hard to get a plumber here in Roma, so those are areas of, of, uh, of study that we can hopefully get a cohesive series of courses there, where those students will get maybe their certificates as they graduate, so the, the collaboration is there, uh, with STC, we had that meeting today, and it was positive, and, uh, a lot of great things happening around our district, and we're proud to say that, uh, we're Roma Gladiators, and, and that's what's taking place in our, in our schools.
Outstanding, Mr. Gonzalez, that is a very good report.
Yeah, we, we also are going to have a band performance, we have band parent here this Friday, there's going to be a performance, but we're try, uh, I told them we'd like to have it at eight o'clock, because, uh,
I sent the message.
we're going to be passing out candies, and we're not going to be able to see the band, and we would all like to see the band, so, uh, Mr. Mireles is, uh, looking at trying to get the performance to start at eight o'clock.
And hopefully we will.
And the next day, they're going to competition.
Competition.
And we, they have competition every day, I mean, every Saturday, right, so it's going to be a busy Saturday, so...
Hopefully, they get to compete this time for real.
Baby Grace belongs to me on Saturdays. But it's going to be fun.
Mr. Garza and other parents get to work again on a Saturday, man, but this one is more, more, uh, a lot more pleasant to be working along with our kids.
Yeah, he needs to practice, we don't want to make mistakes.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, uh, and now we will hear from our district executive director for human resources, Mr. Edgar Garza, with the teacher incentive allotment update.
So I would like...
For those of us that have a, uh, seen.
Good evening, Mr. Perez, members of the board, superintendent Mr. Gonzalez. Just wanted to give you all an update on TIA. We're, we're finalizing the, the data submission. It's already completed. Just need to go over a few things to make sure everything is correct. It's due next Thursday, the 17th. So far, and I'm going to give you overview of what this is and, and what, what our scores look like so far, right? So the top part, you can see that the, last year when we submitted our data, we had an overall of 49. It was denied, but we, because it was close, we were given the opportunity to appeal, right? So we appealed, and then on the next set, you'll see the appeal scores. When we appealed, we went to a 58, and that was enough to get us approved, right? Those are actual scores that were given to, to us by TA, right? The bottom ones, again, were partnered with Texas Tech, which is the one that, that provides some of the training and, and some of the data for us. And this year, they partnered with Fortel X, which is the, the ones that's giving us this report. I could, last year, I could look at the, there's nine checks, right, overall, that the Texas Tech looks at over the data that we submit. Last year, I could look at check 1, 8, and 9 and get a score, but the 2 through 7 are very complicated statistical analysis formulas that you needed to do, and we didn't have the certain numbers for it. But Fortel X now, I, I got the data, cleaned it up, send it to Texas Tech. Texas Tech sends it to Fortel X, and then they give us a report. And you can see that it looks very, very promising. The 58 was, what, was approved after the appeal. Right now, based on, on the data that was given to us by Fortel X, we're at a 70.5. So there's a significant increase. So, so we're, it's, I mean, in talking with TA last year and this year, I would tell them, is there a particular score that we need? And they would say, no, it's a holistic rating. And I would tell them, yeah, but why did you say that we got denied? Because our scores were low. I mean, so it, but he just laughed, right, and said, well, it's holistic. So based, I had a meeting today with Texas Tech, and they're also seeing the numbers, and they're saying that there should be no issues, right? But ultimately, the state, once they do the, the analysis, and, and again, these are the numbers that Fortel X gave us. I ran my numbers, and my numbers for checks 1 and 8 and 9 are the same as what they have. So it's very promising so far, right? But we don't want to say it is because ultimately, we submit this data by the 17th. Then within a couple of weeks, they'll accept the data. It doesn't mean it's approved. It just means that everything that was submitted is there. If there's anything missing, anything that's wrong, because I need to put the TAID number for every teacher, the service, the main service ID and for the classes and all that. So they run all that to see if it, if it's clear. And then once it's approved, it just means it's approved, that our data filed is approved, but then they'll send it to Texas Tech. They're going to charge us $500 again per teacher that we're recommending for a designation. We get reimbursed for that money. We already got reimbursed for last year's submission, right? We will get it next September. And then the final decision will not be until early February, more or less. They'll tell us if it's approved or denied. This year, there is no opportunity for an appeal. It'll be approved or denied. We're hoping, or we're, we're positive, based on the score, that, that there is a very good opportunity for, for that, right? And that's what we want. We want to, to make sure that our teachers are compensated as, as much as possible. This year, part of, part of the appeal last year, we had to come up with plans as far as what we're going to do to, to make sure that we don't run into issues. So one of them was setting minimums, right? So this year, we, we've said since, since the end of last year that we're going to start setting minimums. Basically, the way that somebody gets a designation, it's, it's based on, on the cutoff scores that the state provides, right? So right now, we're at 50/50, 50% for the SGM, 50% for the evaluation, right? Kind of like if you look at it as your homework average and your test average, right, and they count the same. So the, the way we calculate the, the scores, it's based on, on the, what the state provides, which is the SGM of a 55% growth and the evaluation of 3.7. When you calculate those, it gives us the cutoff of a 64.5 to get a recognized, a 69 to get exemplary, and a 80 to get masters, right? So what it means, and this was recommended last year by TA, that, that for us to implement minimums. What that means is that, that way, one score, if, if one score, for example, the evaluation is very high and the SGM is low, when you average it, it might still end up to 64.5. So they get, that particular person would get a designation, but the scores are not correlated because there's a big difference, right? So we're going with 50% and 3.5%, which were a little bit below the cutoffs, but it gives us a little bit of, of that. And that was talking with Texas Tech. That was, those are good scores to, to select. What that means is if a teacher has a high in one, but has, let's see, on the SGM, they have a 40, but when you average them, it still ends up with a 64.5, it's still a no designation because they didn't meet the minimum in both, right? So that's, that's really the way it works, right? So it just means that you need to have both of them at a good level, both the SGM and the evaluation, right? If one of them is a little bit too low, then it, even if, even if that score gives you a, a passing score, you could say it still would not be a designation, right? And this were recommendations from TA as far as setting the, the minimums, right? So now let me give you, do you have any questions on that?
Well, the only question I have on my mind right now is, are the, if I'm to understand you, what you said earlier, when you had asked, is there a grade, when you talked to, I'm not sure who you talked to, that you mentioned, is there a grade that we have to target? And this, in other words, are, are the goalposts moving each time?
No, no, they just don't want to say, well, you need a 60, or you need a 40, or you need a 70. They just say it's, it's holistic, but they're, they look at the scores, but they don't, they're not going to tell us what the score is. But, but last year, the 49 was, was close enough to get to the appeal. When we appealed, we went up to a 58, and that was enough to get it approved. Right now, we're at 70. They're, they're, they're not going to tell us, yes, that's enough because they'll still need to look at all the data. But that, what that, that 70 is signifying that our data is, is correlated, that our data is, is good data, that, that has a, a good mix of the, if you have basically the higher, the evaluation, then the higher the growth, the lower the evaluation, the lower the growth. So this is giving us that we have.
So that percentage number that you're talking about, you said 3.6 or what was it?
3.5 and 50, yeah, but.
Okay, go ahead.
But, but those, the, the 70, they're, they're saying, in talking to Texas, that those are good scores, and they don't see why it shouldn't. But ultimately, they can't guarantee because the ones that decide are, after Texas Tech does the evaluation or the analysis, and then they'll give it to TA, and then TA decides, of course, finally, if, if it's going to be approved or not. But they don't foresee that it shouldn't, but we can't say that it will be approved until they let us know.
Well, I guess what I'm leading to is that TA has the final say.
Yes.
And TA could say, well, you know, this year, we see this many more, more employees now being designated to receive this, and not enough funding, and they could move the.
They, they, that's why they don't say, because they, they could move. And, and that's, that's really what they do with the STAR test also. They never give you the scores until they.
It's the same thing with UIL, when they start classifying schools. It's the same thing. I don't like this at all. Personally, I don't, because you never know where you're going to land. And then you think you're doing well.
Yes.
And then they move the goalposts, and then we have disappointed employees, and they blame the school district, not TA.
And because that could happen where they can say, I mean, when they look at all the data, because they don't need till February to get the data. I mean, once they put the data in, in their system, it automatically gives it. But then they're, I'm sure they're calculating to see, how many teachers are we talking about? So you know what? It's a lot of them, so let's jump up the, our score. So instead of a, a 58, I'm going to say, you know what? Let's go to 65. Because that way, because it's, it's all tied to money, and, and it could happen. I mean, so, so it's, it's still a, a good amount of growth that we have from a 58 to a 70 and a half. But like, like you said, they could move the bar up, and they, they would do it with, with, a lot of times with the STAR test, they don't really release the, the official cutoff scores until they get the data, and they kind of work with it and say, well.
Why we're going through litigation right now.
Yes, that's one of the reasons that, that it's going through litigation, because they would move it to, to, it depends if, they wanted it to, for the districts to look good. Or we want to pick up the bar because we want the scores to look not as good.
Yes, sir, but they're, though unfortunately, there's a lot of finger pointing at the end. Bottom line is that when, when our staff or staff in general in the state are disappointed because they don't get designated for this, TA say, well, you know, they point it back at the district.
The only thing we can say is that we're giving our staff the opportunity to get designated.
And I'm going to give you some numbers so you can get, get an idea of, of what we're talking about. Those are scores. But as far as teachers, so last year, we had a.
Just real quick.
Yes, sir.
These, these that you say that are going to be approved or in February? Yeah, possibly. In that group, are there additions, like people that didn't make it?
Everybody.
And then like people that were at that second one, now moving to the third?
Yes.
Are those included for February?
Yes. So let, let me, let me go over that, and that's, that's what I was going to get to. So last year, we had 149 teachers that got a designation, right? Out of those 149, I have 101 that are going to stay at their designation, right? All the masters stay there. You can't go higher. So you've got the masters for five years, even if they get masters again this year, because we have to, we have to submit the data of every single teacher, regardless of, of the, if they get a designation or not. So if they already had a masters, they have it for five years. So they're not going to lose it. They're not going to, let's say, if they get masters again this year, it's not good five more years and five more years. In other words, you'll get it for five years, and then after the five years, then you can reapply. But if you had recognized, and your scores now demonstrate you're exemplary, then we're going to resubmit your name as an exemplary teacher, and now that one's good for five more years. And then, or, or they were at exemplary, and they go to masters. We had some that were at recognized, and they went to masters. So then that would be good for five more years, right? So, so out of those 149, 101 are keeping their designation. What, they didn't go up, right? But we did have 48 that went up. So we're submitting those for a, a new designation, right, a higher designation.
And how many are master?
Out of those, out of those, we had 50. Last year, we had 50 that were recognized. 22 stayed at recognized because either their scores were still at recognized or maybe lower, right? Because we don't submit if they get lower than that. 13 of those 50 went to exemplary. And 15 went to master.
So they went from recognized to masters?
To masters, yes.
15?
50.
Wow.
So, so we had a total of 28 teachers that, that had a recognized, and they, they're going to go up if approved, right? We're submitting that designation, but ultimately, we'll see if it's approved.
50 masters initially, and now?
No, 50 recognized.
Oh, no, okay, okay. But how many were masters initially?
Initially, 47.
And now 15 now, 15 additional.
15 additional ones.
Okay, if they're recognized?
But those are just the ones from, those are just the ones from last year.
Right.
Then we're getting new ones that didn't get a designation last year. Last year, like, we have 400 teachers, so 149 got a designation, so we're talking about 250 that didn't. So now, from there, we're getting 69 new master teachers.
Total.
Total. So in total, well, let me go over the numbers, and then I'll clarify. So last year, like I said, we had 149. 48 of those went up. So we're going to resubmit them. And then we had a total of 143 new designations. That means that these were teachers that didn't get a designation last year. So last year, we had 149. This year, we have 143. So at the end, we're going to have, if approved, 292 teachers with a designation, which is more than 60, about 63% of our teachers would have a designation.
How many teachers, how many teachers are, well, I know every teacher qualifies, or not qualify, sorry, have the opportunity. So how many teachers are we talking about? How many teachers have the opportunity for this, for the TIA?
This, 400, about 440.
So a little bit more than 50% already have a designation or?
Right, right. If, if this was approved, we would have about 63% of our teachers with a designation.
And this time, every teacher had the opportunity?
Last time, last time they did also, but because of the appeal, we had to, one of the conditions of the appeal was to remove a, a teacher group. This year, we can't.
That was, that was my question. Are, is that group included?
It's included there, yes. Everybody's, last year, everybody was, but then because of the appeal, we had to remove a group. But everybody's now back in the pool, so all 400 teachers.
For February, those people that were out are now?
A lot of those that, that were pulled out, they qualify now.
Based on the recommendation?
Based on this.
But automatically, they still have to.
But that, it's TA, no TA approval?
Now, now TA has to approve. Yeah, if TA approves it, like I said, we would have 292 teachers with a designation.
But now they can be recommended?
Yes.
For, 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 for a designation?
Yes.
And last time, they couldn't?
Last time, they were initially, but because it was denied, then we had to remove that group, yes. Yeah, so they didn't get, now they can, yes.
Mr. Garza, if I was a recognized teacher status designation, and they gave me a certain amount this year, I got that amount.
Yes.
And if I improved to another?
It's going to be a different amount.
For, for four years?
Five years.
Five more years?
Five more. It starts again, because you grew, you went to a higher designation, you start for five more years.
The resets, yeah.
But, but not the ones at the highest, the masters?
The masters.
Locked in for five years?
For five years, yes, the masters.
All the others can go, can increase?
So, so let's say, if, if you were a master teacher last year, and then this year, you, you qualify because of your score, you're a master teacher, you still keep it at masters. It doesn't reset. It, it, after the five years, then, because we're going to be submitting data every year, so after the five years there. So, so at the end, if, if it gets approved, we would have 47 teachers recognized, 94 exemplary, and 151 master teachers. In, in, in our district, right, so.
What were the numbers, 100 and what?
47 recognized, 94 exemplary, and 151 masters, for a total of 292.
And then we keep our fingers crossed with TIA.
Hopefully, the, those scores, I mean, it's a, it's a good jump, so.
Well, that, and then they, they continue funding it, because once funds are over, then this is over too, right?
And Roberto, last year, how many were recognized, sir, last year?
Last year, a total of 149. This year, it would be an additional, those 149 are going to get, are going to keep their designation. We're adding another 143 to, to the total. And, and once, once I submit it next week, and they approve the submission, then I'll start notifying the teachers like I did before, explaining that there, this is the proposed designation, pending approval of TA, and, and that information, right? And, and of course, teachers need to understand also that if they were recognized this year, they're going to be recognized, recognized next year. The difference is that the money might be different. Every year is going to be different. It's all based on the, the enrollment. So they don't release that enrollment until Manuel will submit the, the winter submission and, and by March. And then in April, they, the state looks at the, the enrollment of that particular campus, and they'll do, they'll give out. give out. So, uh, I know from previous year to, to this year, I mean, some campuses went up, um, by a few hundred dollars, some went down by a few hundred, some went down by a thousand, some went up by a thousand. So it's, it's not that set amount. It's every year, the state will, will release the, the, the amount that you qualify for based on the, on that. Plus, if a teacher, um, moves to a different campus, then that money, it did, now it depends on the campus that you're going to, what their, uh, the allotment is for that campus.
Yeah, but it's all state politics, and depending on what mood the leaders are in, uh, Stan.
And, and one of the reasons for this is because the state doesn't like to give, like, uh, across-the-board raises to everybody. So there, this is kinda like their way of saying, well, uh, the teachers that, um, earned this, uh, we're giving, we're giving you money, but only if you earn it because of this, but.
Yeah, I, I can, I can remember.
Some schools are not allowing everybody to.
Yes.
Mary Lou, and I, and myself, Mr. Garza.
The career.
We remember a similar program back in the day, and then it wasn't funded.
Yes.
It stopped.
So.
Time will tell.
Now, um, that, that's what is projected, that, you know, if TA approves, that's how much. But if not, there's no appeal, right?
There's no appeal.
If I recall correctly, they just said the first year was the only year with appeal. Yorita is, they either accept all, or they don't.
They'll be appealed, but only for campuses or districts that are submitting for the first time.
For the first time.
For example. But for us, because we already submitted one time, then it's either gonna be approved or denied.
Well, we can only hope for the best.
Yes.
And, uh, I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer, but sometimes can't help but think that these things will happen or won't happen. Thank you, Mr. Garza, for this very, uh, this very in-depth report on TIA. It's very, um, informative.
Yes. And we'll see. Hopefully, the, the scores, uh, seem to be, uh, good, and, and hopefully, it's enough for, for the state to.
Well, we, we all have the expectation that you will be the bearer of good news the next time you give us a report.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, go to agenda. Item, uh, number 13, employment and resignation of professionals and paraprofessionals. Mr. Gonzalez.
Mr. Perez, I'm asking, uh, the board to approve the employment and resignation of professionals and paraprofessionals listed in board book.
Thank you, sir. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, agenda item number 13, as presented by Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? If none, there's a motion on the floor by trustee Moscorro, and seconded by trustee Barrera, to approve agenda item number 13 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor and unopposed, one absent. Motion carries. Agenda item number 14 is adjourned. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Six in favor and unopposed, motion carries. It is now 8:30 PM, and this special call meeting of the Roma Nippon School District Board of Trustees held this Wednesday, October 9th, 2024, is adjourned. A reminder that this Friday, October 11th, the, the school district's annual trunk or treat will take place from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the student parking lot by the Gladiator Arena. Also, I just received notice from, from, uh, head band director, Mr. John Mireles, that he's been able to reschedule the clinicians for the evening. He will speak to the band tomorrow morning. That means that the performance will be at 8:00 PM. Well, we appreciate your attendance and, uh, at this meeting, and wish all of you a most enjoyable rest of the day and weekend. Blessings to all of you. Until next time.